Audio, video, ready?
(laughing).
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, November 2, 2010, at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation on the wall and the little plastic bins by the door where you walked in. Help yourself to that information. I don't see any first timers here today. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28. This session will be rebroadcast again on Thursday at noon. And we are streaming live over the Internet, and we'll make some announcements about election activities at the end of the meeting. And we would appreciate it if you would turn off your cell phones and pagers while you're in council chambers this evening. We're going to get through this pretty quickly, I believe. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Sossarman.
Here. Would Councilmember Dutton please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Thank you. There was no closed session. Adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 8, Public Comment. Is there anyone wishing to comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda?
Donna Heine, Gatewood Estates, better, lower, higher, whatever. I believe I came here two years ago and congratulated you on your election as mayor. And I also wanted to say several things. One of them was, you and I didn't always see eye to eye, but then you never do when you're in an elected office. But everything that was in a meeting stayed in the meeting, didn't go out afterwards. And I appreciated that. And I wanted you to know that I appreciate the service that you have given this community. It hasn't been easy for you, I'm sure, on many occasions. I'm quite certain that you're going to miss a lot of this, but there's a lot of it you won't miss. You probably won't want to come back in here for many weeks, maybe many months, but it'll still be here. And you will remember these, all of your experiences here, very fondly. And I just wanted to share that with you and tell you that you did a good job. And everybody in town appreciates the burdens that you have carried and the decisions that you have made. So, thank you. And Bill Dutton, I've really only gotten to appreciate you over the last year, maybe year and a half. And I think that you sit there very quietly, you don't say a lot during a meeting, but when you speak, you speak with authority. You have researched. You know exactly what you're going to say. You listen to people. You're a good guy. I like you. And I've really appreciated getting to know you. And I want to thank you also. You have been a tremendous servant to this community. People who haven't sat on that side of the bench don't know what you people all go through. It isn't just these two council meetings a month. It's five days a week, and sometimes seven nights a week. So, thank you for your dedication. And I too speak for many people who appreciate the work that you have done. And we will miss you both. And I would also like to congratulate our incoming mayor, because I think that person has worked very, very hard, very diligently, and will make a wonderful mayor. And oops, I'm not going to say who. So, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else? Public comment. Anything not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no more comments, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar? I will abstain from voting on item 9C and 9E.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the abstentions as noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? None that motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB, GASBY 45 Actuarial Valuation. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Just a brief introduction and overview. GASBY 45, as you know, is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement, which requires governmental agencies to report in their financial statements an actuarial estimate of the cost of providing other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. And in the town's case, the benefit that we do offer is retiree health care. Now, the town is mandated to implement GASBY 45 with the financial statements issued for the fiscal year just ended, June 30, 2010. And that implementation required an updated actuarial study, and we will record the liability for OPEB in our CAFER this year. So, we've taken the following steps, just to review how we've gotten to where we are currently. We implemented an internal payroll rate that we calculate on salaries each year to begin funding the future liability, as well as what we currently pay for our existing retirees. And in 2008, '09, that rate was at 3.75%. In 2009, '10, by council policy, we increased that rate to 5%. And currently, in our 2010, '11 year, we're setting aside 6%. And next year, in 2011, '12, our policy bumped that up to 7%. Council also took action to allocate $350,000 from the sale of the current NBA water rights to OPEB funding. So, our current balance in our OPEB reserve is approximately $523,500. And at the end of 2010, '11, we're projecting we'll have $543,000 set aside for retiree health benefits. While setting aside funding is good progress, the funds are considered, are not considered restricted, as they technically could be allocated by council for other purposes. So, the only way to truly restrict the funds to be eligible for reporting in the CAFER would be to establish an irrevocable trust and set these funds aside in that trust fund. So, staff is recommending that we do pursue this option, and there are several agencies that offer this service. And with council direction, we will begin to research various programs and providers and bring back a final recommendation to council in the next few months to make that move and put our funds in an irrevocable trust. We did go through our actuarial study, and tonight I'd like to introduce John Bartel of Bartel Associates, and he's here to walk through the study and an overview of the town's liability.
Great. Thank you very much. At the, in, at the risk of getting myself in a little bit of trouble, I'll encourage you all to please interrupt me as, as I go. I think it'll be far more valuable for you all if you ask questions as, as we go. My goal, having said that here, my goal is to go through this information relatively quickly. So, as an attachment to the staff report, there was a very, very long discussion outline that I've gone over with staff in excruciating for them detail. For you all, I brought a short version, so you all ought to have a handout that, that's a supplement, if you will, to the staff report. There's really nothing in this document that was not in the longer version. We've just condensed it, if, if you will. So, the first couple of slides, Slide 1 is really background on GASBY 45. I don't, I, my intention will really be to not go through that in detail, but very, very simply, all it says is, you need to hire an actuary. That actuary needs to tell you how much you should be contributing. It then becomes a business decision as to whether or not you make that contribution or don't make that contribution. But the accounting standard goes on to say that unless you make that contribution into an irrevocable trust, you have to include on your financial statement the difference between what you should have contributed and what you did not, what you, what you did, actually did contribute. So, so you end up with an obligation on your financial statement equal to the difference between what you should have contributed and what you actually did contribute. So, that's really arguably what Slide 1 is talking about. Slide 2, probably not a favorite slide of mine, but it really goes through the definitions, the terminology that we'll use. And so, with your permission, I'll just kind of skip over that and define the terms when we get to the numbers. Similarly, Slides 3 and 4 summarize the town's retiree medical benefit provided to current retirees and future retirees. Fair amount of information there. I will mention one thing that you all have done, and that is to implement a vesting schedule. The only reason why that is particularly important is, prior to the implementation of the vesting schedule, you could have an individual work for the town for a very short period of time, retire directly from the town, and get the full benefit. So, the nature of this benefit is, it's not really earned as, over a long period of time. It's really earned as soon as you are eligible for the benefit. So, the vesting schedule significantly mitigates that likely could, requiring a minimum of five years of town service to get the benefit and 20 years of total CalPERS service to get the full benefit. So, so that change did not have a big impact on liabilities, but did have a big impact for, for a group your size to eliminate the chance that somebody can come in and get the full benefit with very, very little town service. So, if, if we go to Slide, Slide 5, so Slide 5 is the summary, the continuation of the summary of the benefits. Slide 6 is the demographic information. We did the study using June 30, '09 data. The June 30, '09 valuation determines the town's 11, '12, and 12, '13 arc. The first year of information, of implementation, '9, '10, and the second year, '10, '11, are based on the prior valuation. And Slide 7 might arguably be my favorite slide. That's where we, we talk in long detail about the actuarial methods and assumptions. Let me mention a couple of very, very important assumptions here. Important assumption number one is, we are by and large assuming that people are going to terminate, retire, live for a period of time, consistent with the way that CalPERS is assuming for your CalPERS pension benefit. So, that's, that's fact number one. Fact number two is, we've actually, we're presenting results under three different, what actuaries refer to as discount rates. Discount rate is the, if you owe somebody a dollar, how much would you, would that, how much would you need to set aside today to get to that dollar a year from today? So, scenario number one is presuming that the town continues, pay as you go, in other words, continues to set money into an internal service fund, but does not move that money into an irrevocable trust. And then scenarios number 2 and 3 provide two alternatives for potential investment return that you might get from an irrevocable trust. One, a more conservative investment, long-term investment return of 6%. Second one is a relatively aggressive discount rate. Investments are significantly diversified in equities and a seven and three-quarters long-term investment return assumption. The final, if you did decide to pre-fund, the final results will really be a function of where you decide to put that money. It's really, the assumed rate of return is based on the investments in the trust, as opposed to arguably the other way around. But what you'll see shouldn't be a big surprise to anybody, and that is, there really are only two ways to put money into the trust, contributions, and investment return. So, if you expect to get a lower investment return, your contributions have to be higher. Ultimately, it will depend on actual investment return, but the nature of evaluation is a long projection with those assumed investment mixes, assumed investment returns. So, if we look at Slide 8, you see the three, three columns of, of results, continue, pay as you go. These numbers are in thousands of dollars. So, the key, key term number one is something called the actuarial accrued liability. That is, the value of benefits due to service that's already been rendered. So, arguably, it's another way of saying this is, how much should you have set aside due to, due to current employees as well as current retirees? You can see in a four and a quarter discount rate, that's $2.7 million. At a 6% discount rate, that drops to $2.2 million, $2,177. And then at a seven and three-quarters assumption, it's $1,774. The natural inclination is to say, the number that I want is the lower of the three. I'll just caution you that it may look good now, but if you don't get that seven and three-quarters, ultimately, you're going to have to pay whatever investment return does not, does not get. And then under, continuing on Slide 8, you see 2010, '11 annual required contribution, sometimes referred to as the ARC. That is, how much you should be setting aside. And under four and a quarter, that number is 372,000. Under 6%, it drops to about 299,000. And at seven and three-quarters, 254,000. Let me just kind of mention one thing. This will become relatively clear when we go to the next couple of slides. Those numbers include what you are currently paying retirees, frequently referred to as a pay-as-you-go number. You're sitting right now at about $100,000 a year. So, the, the, the real additional cost is the difference between those arcs, the annual required contribution, and that expected pay-as-you-go number of about $100,000 a year. So, if we go to Slide 9, really Slide 9 and 10 go very, very much together. Slide 9 is a projection over the next 10 years of several things. Thing number one is, we talked about the obligation on your financial statement of the difference between how much you should be contributing and how much you will be contributing. Slide number 9 looks at that from a net, from a pay-as-you-go. It presumes you do not pre-fund into an irrevocable trust. And so, if you look down the left-hand side of Slide 9, you'll see fiscal years ending. And then just to the right of that, you'll see a column labeled Net OPEB Obligation. So, the reader of the financial statement, again, these are in thousands of dollars, will notice that you all have a, an amount due that has not yet been paid. And that number grows from, at June 30, '11, to, of about a quarter of a million dollars, to about 3.3 million in 10 years. So, I'm not a financial advisor. I'm not a budget manager. My sense is that is a relatively large number for a town this size. And what that would really mean is, the reader of the financial statement would look at the magnitude of that number, look at it as a number that should have been paid but has not been paid. So, it's sort of a, in, in the, in the parlance of a public sec, of a private sector entity, it's sort of a reduction to shareholders' equity. It's an amount due that has not yet been paid yet. The bigger that number becomes, the more interested the folks who rate the, the town's bonds become. So, the only way to mitigate that number is to, one of two things, either change the benefit or pre-fund. In other words, take the money that you have and move it into an irrevocable trust and have it earn a higher rate of return than you're able to earn in the town's investment fund. So, we've put that scenario together on Slide 10. And, and what we've done is, we have presumed that during '10, '11, the town would pay the amount held in the internal service fund, plus pay-as-you-go costs. And then in year 2, and, and if you did that, that would mean that you would over-contribute. For '11, '12, you start out with a $267,000 shortfall from '9, '10. And then you over-contribute so that you are, you have a net OPEB asset. You've contributed more than, than what we've told you to contribute, a net OPEB asset of about $88,000. And then for '11, '12, we have presumed that you would contribute enough to wipe out that net OPEB asset, and then future contributions would be equal to what contribution would be required. What's interesting about this, if you look at Slide 10 for a moment, number one, the net OPEB obligation, if you're making the contribution required, ends up being zero. That's important note number, number one. Number two is, if you look, there are three columns under contribution, pay-as-you-go are the benefit payments for retirees. The pre-funding is the amount that you would need to make above the pay-as-you-go to get to the annual required contribution. And if you look in year 1, that's the $553,000 that you have in the internal service fund. Year number 2, to get to a zero, that would drop to about $107,000. And then, when you get to '12, '13, and beyond, you're at a relatively steady $200,000 a year, increasing very, very modestly at, at some point in time, as interest really begins to kick in. In the neighborhood of 15 to 20 years, we're actually expecting that $200,000 to begin to drop. And then beyond 20 years, we would begin to really expect the full effect of pre-funding to kick in. The whole, the whole point of pre-funding is really twofold. One is, get a higher investment return dedicated to these benefits. That's number one. And number two, it's set money aside now so that you aren't faced with very, very high costs down the road. We think that will begin to kick in, in 20 years or so. It's a long-term decision. It's not something that is, it has a short-term budget advantage. It's a long-term budget advantage. But I'll also add, it's exactly what you're doing on the pension side. You're setting money aside to make sure that money is there to pay the benefits for your current employees. Same thing you would do for a college account for, for a child or a grandchild. It's really no, it's no different than that. So, that's the end of my presentation. I can keep talking if you'd like me to, but I'm presuming you wouldn't.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. Bartel?
Mr. Bartel, thank you for your presentation. There's a lot of data in here. You did actually a very good job of putting it into words, so congratulations. I think that we'll have more discussions about this when budget time comes around next year, no doubt about it. Maybe in the future, I assume that Kathleen has all of the gory details of this, because you made a comment about this Slide 10, which is the pre-funding, that that pre-funding number starts to level out. I assume on, on Slide 9, that the benefit payments, because we have this net obligation that is exploding, if we saw a graph, that would start to be, the benefit payment for the town would start to go.
Exactly.
Up tremendously. I think that would be very powerful when we get around to the point of actually discussing this from a policy decision, to see that graph, because, I mean, we all talk about, we've seen other cities have, you know, I think Napa is probably a good example. I don't know their numbers perfectly, but they went from 2% of their budget five years ago to like 9%, and it's going to explode. I would like to make sure that that data is available for, in a graphical presentation that's easy to understand. I don't really have any questions. I, when I was looking at the unfunded liability, we, that didn't really change hardly at all from two years ago, which I guess is.
That's right.
Not really a surprise.
That's right.
Obviously, if we add employees or subtract employees, that's the real trigger. Or change the benefit package.
That, that's exactly right.
Other than the discount rate and all that kind of.
That's right.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions specifically regarding the irrevocable trust. So, first, that is a GASEB requirement?
Well, it's a, so let's be clear here. There is no requirement that you have an irrevocable trust. The requirement is, that if you don't have a trust, any money you've set aside can't be used as an asset to offset the liability.
Sure.
And, and it's very, very simple logic, and that is, this council or future councils could use that money, has the authority to use that money. And as long as it's in an internal service fund, you are not limiting what this or future councils could do.
Okay, so there is not a specific requirement?
That's absolutely correct.
So, this is not Zarbain, Oxley, or anything like that?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And then I have a question about your assumption that once it goes in the irrevocable trust, how do you make the conclusion that you're going to get a higher investment return? Because of the instruments that are in that?
Yeah. No, no, that's absolutely right. So, you all are very, very much restricted in terms of the type of instruments you can invest in. So, short-term, virtually no-risk instrument. So, you can't go out and buy stocks. That's, that's, I'm not an attorney. Please, right, any, anything that I say in that area, write down in pencil, but, but check, check with the town attorney. They will tell you, I believe, that there's very, very limitations in terms of what, how you can invest money. A, any retirement system, whether you're talking about pensions or whether you're talking about retiree medical, has a different measure in terms of how money can be invested. You end up being, having a restriction that says you can't invest in anything that is imprudent. So, very, very different standard than what the town has. So, you could, if you, if, for example, you went to CalPERS and invested with their CERBT trust, they have somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% of their investments in equities, U.S. and international stocks. They have a significant portion of the remaining 30% in long-term bonds, not, not really the type of short-term bonds that, that you all have. The expectation. The expectation is, over the long run, as has really been despite the relatively recent drop, over the long run, there is an expectation that equities will earn more than short-term high-quality bonds will earn. Do we know for sure that's going to be the case? No, it's really going to be a function of the real rate of return you get on that money, but it's that expectation that it's the type of instruments that are changing. So CalPERS, if you join their trust, has a mandate that we would need to use a seven-and-three-quarters investment return assumption if you pay the full ARC. On the other hand, CalPERS is not the only investment vehicle that you could look to. So that's why we're kind of giving you a 6%. A 6% is a much more modest investment in stocks, maybe a 40-plus percent. It is a, how do I say this? It might be a better, one of the, I probably shouldn't use the word better. One of the issues with, that CalPERS has had, I think you all know this, is the volatility of their investment return. Anytime you have a target of a high amount of equities, you're going to have a significant volatility. And so that lower 6% mitigates, doesn't eliminate, but mitigates that volatility. So I'm sorry, that was a very long answer, but the shorter answer is yes, it's the type of instrument.
Okay, then one last, hopefully you'll have a short answer to this one. If we put it in, is there an option for a revocable trust that would have similar instruments?
Oh, the, well, so now please, I'm going to, you're asking what is really a legal question.
Okay.
And however, having said that, just any answer I give you, you should confirm with town council. My belief, the answer is no, because if it's revocable, that really means it's town money. And if it's town money, it's restricted. Now please, make sure, make sure town council agrees with me on that.
Okay. I was thinking, thank you. Any more questions? Mr. Bartel? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this presentation? All righty, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and direction.
I think what I'd like to suggest that we do, one is, I think this is a positive reflection on the focus and direction that the council's had over the last several years, and you can see that the efforts have had a positive trend. And as we continue to contribute above the rate that it actually cost us, we will continue to grow the contribution rate and the fund balance. So what staff is really looking for, and we think it's consistent with your prior policy direction, is one, to receive and file the report, which is a requirement that we have to do. And secondly, if it is your consideration, we'd like minute order direction to do our homework and review a few different options, and then bring back a recommendation for a revocable, irrevocable, sorry, an irrevocable trust provider to the council, you know, in a few months.
Counselor Chilton?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Well, if I
I'm sorry.
May ask for clarification. Steve, what you just said, you're asking for a minute order action not to necessarily restrict the funds into that irrevocable trust. You're asking for just guidance to move forward.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You will make, yes, we would bring you back a recommendation for the actual placement. So what we're saying today, we're asking the council, is this the path you want us to continue down? Because previously, you'd asked us to do what we could to be in full compliance with GASP. I do want to point out that, as Mr. Bartel said, GASP is really interesting because it says you should do all this. And I want to remind that setting money aside and paying as you go is not necessarily inappropriate, but it is an accounting structure. And by pre-funding, we're able to make contributions, reduce the liability going forward. But it does require the action of taking, in this case, about what we hope to be $543,000 when we close the year. We might have a little bit more, and we can include that in policy discussion, because in the past, the council has shown a willingness that if we had a good year, perhaps put a little more into this area. The more we do now, obviously has a better effect long-term.
I'll make a motion to accept the report and file it, and to take minute order action to direct staff to do the appropriate research for the establishment of an irrevocable OPEB trust, and to bring that back for final council approval at a future council meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, none that motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, Napa City-County Library Commission. Do you have a staff report in total?
Yes, thank you. The town is recruiting for one position on the Napa City-County Library Commission. We first did our notice of vacancy back in July, and when we did not receive any applications during that filing period, we extended it to an open until filled status. Recently, we received two applications, one from Sherri Brightingam and the other from Linda Conchilien. The town council has interviewed Ms. Brightingam and Ms. Conchilien, and we have, the request is to have council appoint one member. Should council choose not to appoint a member, we would request that staff go out and recruit additional applicants. Council completed their ballots earlier, and I will read those into the record. Councilmember Dutton ranked Ms. Brightingam as first choice and Ms. Conchilien as second Vice Mayor Dunbar ranked Ms. Brightingam as first choice and Ms. Conchilien as second choice. Mayor Sossaman ranked Ms. Conchilien as first choice and Ms. Brightingam as second choice. Councilmember Chilton ranked Ms. Conchilien as first choice, Ms. Brightingam as second choice. And councilmember Mohler ranked Ms. Conchilien as first choice and Ms. Brightingam as second choice. The total ranking is a total of eight to appoint Ms. Conchilien and seven is Ms. Brightingam. So Linda Conchilien received the highest number of votes, so staff asked for appointment by motion from council.
I have a motion.
Move to approve, let me get her first name here, Sherri, no, wrong one, Linda Ketchian, did I get that right, as the new commissioner to the library board.
I will second the motion for Ms. Conchilien.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, none that motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, are there any staff reports, informational reports? Item 13, council reports and comments. Flood control will meet on the ninth. NCTPA has a special meeting tomorrow, and I assume another meeting on the 17th. Are there any other reports or comments?
I attended the WIC board last Thursday, and there was a very long discussion on measuring wells throughout the valley. So there has been some of that in the past, but they have a new grant to consistently measure all the water level in all the wells. It's a voluntary program, so they're going to be having a program so we know what our groundwater is. And that was pretty much all the discussion, so thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you to staff for constructing the shortest council meeting in the four years I've been on the council.
It was painful, I want to
I know it was, Steve.
Torturous. Any other comments, council comments? Phil? John?
No.
I have a few. We have an invitation to the Veterans Day ceremonies up at the Veterans Home on November 11, beginning at 10:00 a.m. with a ribbon-cutting ceremony to open the new, what are they opening? Member Services Building. So that'll be a special occasion for all the veterans and all those who served, honoring all those who served. I also have an announcement from the elections office. There will be live local election coverage on Napa TV, which I believe is channel 28, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And it's also going to be on KVON 1440 a.m. and cable, yeah, that's cable Comcast, channel 28, web streaming at nappavallieTV.org or nappavallieregister.com. And the city of Napa will be holding an election night central at 955 School Street for the city of Napa. And links to the election results are at Napa Valley TV live web streaming, and they're available on the town's website, www.townofYountville.com. And I just want to comment, I know many of you just received your sample ballot last week in the mail. It was unfortunate, the timing to receive this. There's a lot of good information in the sample ballot that it would have been nice to have prior to receiving our actual ballots. But I just want to say that for those of you who, I've been asked by a number of people about Measure P and some of the candidate's statements, and I just regret that it wasn't received sooner. So hopefully, the elections office will have a reason for that, and hopefully, we won't need to remedy any issues that might arise at a later date. So any more comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. We missed future agenda items.
Sorry.
The next council meeting.
I'm sorry.
I know, I'm, yeah, I understand. Notice of completion for bus stops and Class 1 bike path will be on the next agenda. We might be looking at the ad hoc design review, as well as the R&amp;D kitchen master development plan review, and the local food advisory council interviews and appointment. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.